Good evening to tonight's city council meeting. Let me start with a prayer before we do the pledge, please. Let's bow our heads. Gracious Father, we thank you for this opportunity here to serve our citizens of the city of Saginaw. We ask you be with all the citizens, be with those during this past week or so that tragedy has occurred again, and we ask that you be with all the families and everyone involved in that, to give them some kind of strength and relief. We ask you be with all our workers, all our city workers, employees, keep them safe also. Be with us as we deliberate tonight's business. We ask this in your name. Amen. At this time, I'd like Jonathan Rosa and Michael Nielsen come on up to the podium there. They're from Post 304, United Methodist, and they are going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Right up to the podium, right up there where the mic is. Thank you, gentlemen. And on your cue, we're going to follow you, okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Councilwoman Tibbs.
Present.
Councilwoman Bench is absent. Mayor Protem O'Neill is absent. Councilwoman Klorus.
Present.
Councilwoman Moore.
Present.
Councilwoman Balls.
Present.
And Councilwoman Clark is absent. Mayor Browning.
Present.
We have six members present and three absent.
And before we go any further, just a reminder to the audience that please remain quiet, refrain from speaking, and also at this time, it's a good time to check your phones, electronic devices, to make sure that they don't go off and interfere with our meeting. Appreciate that. And Madam Clerk, I believe we're at announcements.
Yes, I have one this evening. I'd like the public to know that the Ways Convenient Station will be open this Saturday, December 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for the city residents. And Mayor, your next item of business, we do not have any personal appearances this evening, so your next order of business is remarks of counsel.
Well, I, this is the first time, I've never had this happen before. I'm not sure how many times you've had this happen. There's no public or personal appearance. Once, okay. Very good. And it is too late for anyone in the audience to get up and speak, so we'll just have to do it. Okay, we're going to start with council remarks tonight. Each council member has five minutes, and tonight we begin with Councilwoman Brenda Moore.
Good evening, citizens of Saginaw. I don't have any comments for tonight other than I hope everybody stays warm, because they say that we've got a snowstorm coming. So just stay warm and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Klorus.
First of all, it really pleases me to see a couple of Boy Scouts. I hope you didn't mind my hand with your salute rather than the heart. The reason I say that, the other day, I don't know if you people are aware of this, I talked to the retiring minister from one of the prominent churches that had a very, very active Boy Scout group and asked him what they were doing. He says they've disbanded because of interest, and I'm really sorry to hear that. So if you guys can do some recruiting, get some guys out there, will you? We need you. Thank you. Last meeting, there was some discussion at the table about skilled trades, and it concerned me. So I looked around a little bit, and I'm not going to read it, you've got it. There are places for apprentice participation, anywhere from carpentry, electrical, job molding, no right, you name it. It's there. Anybody who wants to learn, get out and do it. Other than that, I have nothing else to say. I think it's going to be a short evening.
Thank you. Mayor Protem O'Neill.
Mr. Mayor, I have no comments. I pass.
Thank you. Councilman Tibbs.
Well, I debated, oh, good evening, everyone. I debated whether or not to discuss on this issue at this point, but it appears that it's being discussed amongst our city residents. But first, I guess I would like to also recognize what you stated earlier during the prayer, Mayor, that their tragedy ads hit the city, and we can't forget about the parents and the relatives who lost some loved ones, and our prayers are with them. But I guess what the topic I was referring to is the 129 South Ranger property. I guess that was formerly owned by Dick Garber. I guess what I want to say is I think it's important to remember that we have good people on all sides of this issue here. I mean, we have Mr. Garber, who has done anything and everything possible he can do for a city, and he appeared at the variance meeting and spoke from the heart, from what I've saw. And you can see it yourself on, I believe, YouTube or the city's website. And, you know, in most cases, an individual like that will send their attorney or representative, but he came himself in and spoke to the residents. And as I said, there's good people on all sides. As far as individuals who are on that committee, Dr. Nash, a good person who's done tremendous amount for our city. We have George Bush, an attorney here in the city. I believe he was a former county prosecutor, very intelligent person. So I think we got good people there who will make a good decision for the city. And we have residents from here through Square who does so much for our city as far as taking personal ownership in that particular part of our city, participating in all type of citywide events. It's a tough position to be in, but I just want everybody to remember that everyone in this predicament are good individuals who appear to come from their heart. So I think it wouldn't be right to villainize anyone in this situation, because as I stated before, everyone has done quite a bit for the city, and they should be recognized for that and remembered for that. I don't know at some point if the city, or, excuse me, council does have to weigh in on that. I didn't know if it would be appropriate for the council to be provided some type of memo to see what the tests are, whether or not, if something should come before this body if we have to decide on it. But it appears to me that's something we need to be prepared for, and I just want everyone to remember that, hey, look, everyone appears to have their neighborhood and the city first at heart, and someone may not end up happy in this situation, but I think whatever comes out will be the best thing for the city, considering the people involved. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Tibbs.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Welcome, everybody. I want to also say hello and greetings to the scouts that are here and the adults that are with them, some people that I know and known for a long time. Welcome. Good to see you. And I recognize Tom Bagan back there. I think we're going to be hearing from him, too, so it's good. I don't have a whole lot to say other than to add my voice, I guess, to what was said about the scouts and about scouting. I helped to start a scout troop at our church here in Saginaw many years ago, many, many years ago. Actually, it was a restart, one that had languished. Actually, had been going for a number of years before I arrived on the scene, but, you know, it just takes a couple of adults to get involved and to say, okay, we're going to, we're going to do this. We're going to put it out there. Come on, come on, young guys. Sign up. Let's do it. Let's start. There's all kinds of training. The adults first get the training, and the young boys and young adults with them, and it just takes off. And pretty soon, you're celebrating your first year, second year, third year, et cetera. In the city of Saginaw, there's been a lot of really excellent scout troops, and Ames Methodist has been one of the premier ones for many, many, many years. So my congratulations to you. Thank you for being here, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to extend my welcome to everyone that's here. I'll be brief. My comments are mostly, are mostly today, about a couple of gems that are here in the city of Saginaw. One is a Temple Theater, and the other is one of the performing arts cultural events that performs at the Temple Theater, and that's the Saginaw Basin Symphony Orchestra. They're having their Christmas concert tomorrow night, 7:30, Tuesday the 9th, at the Temple Theater, so certainly welcome everybody to attend. It's going to be a great concert. And then Thursday, this coming Thursday, on the 11th of December, also at the Temple Theater, the Mike Brush and the Brush Street Group will be performing there with the Saginaw Basin Symphony Orchestra, youth orchestra, which is really quite a tremendous group of kids. They're very talented youngsters, mostly high school age, some even younger, but they will be featured in that concert as well, so I would certainly welcome and invite everybody to come down and enjoy, see how some of our youth can perform music. They do a fabulous job. There's also, it won't be featured that day, but the orchestra also sponsors an intermediate group and a beginning strings group. It is really amazing to watch children who have never picked up any instrument before, and they start with a string instrument, and the next thing you know, they're playing a violin, all the way through the squacks, all the way to real music. And it's really exciting to see these kids perform. So hopefully, you'll be interested in checking out that event Thursday as well. And since this is approaching the holiday season, that's all I'm going to cover today, just the good news about our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, citizens. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out to the city council meeting today. The Boy Scout, I'd like to thank you guys for doing what you're doing, and you're doing a good job and keep up the good work. My heart is trumbler to me today, considering the fact that we have some shootings here in the city of Saginaw. I really wish I could walk every neighborhood, every door, knock on people's door, and ask the young people to please put down their weapons. It's not a good way to try to settle your disputes with guns. And it brings me to another point. I think about the Big Brothers and Sisters program. I've been in the program for almost 28 years. Neither one of my little brothers has got into any major trouble with the police. One of them mouthed off at the police one day, and he pulled him up by his pants, and he'd been a good citizen ever since. Matter of fact, that same police officer helped him buy his first car. Now he's gainfully employed, he's doing a good job, he's working every day, he's not brought any kids in the city of Saginaw without being married. So I'm looking, you know, that really makes me feel good. But everybody here could get involved into the Big Brothers and Sisters program. It doesn't take a lot. A lot of times, my little just come over to the house with me and my wife, and we just do family things. I fix a lot of bikes, but sometimes the little brothers don't have lawnmowers, and I teach them how to cut grass and how to keep it clean and things of that nature. We have picnics or whatever at the house. They're just a part of the family. We don't always go somewhere or something like that, but we do do nice events. I know if I've had six little brothers in the last 28 years, and one of these guys has gotten any trouble, it proves to me that mentoring do work. And it doesn't take a lot. I mean, a lot of people are afraid that these kids are going to come to their house and disrupt their households, but they have a tendency to assimilate where they at. If you're hanging around a bunch of guys doing knucklehead stuff, they end up doing knucklehead stuff. But if they can happen to be around a family where there's a male and female adult in the household, then they assimilate how those people act, and they end up doing the same thing when they get out in the community. So I would implore everybody that's listening to me today to please get involved into a young person's life, so that they don't keep on bringing this crime and these situations into Saginaw that makes our city look bad. I know there's more good people in the city of Saginaw than there is bad people. I know for a fact it is. I see the Renaissance is happening in the city of Saginaw right now, and it makes me feel goodnessful. But if we want to keep attracting businesses and people here that's going to bring their resources here, that we need to do something about the bad element that we have in the city of Saginaw. And we can do it, one adult at a time, one match at a time, just getting involved in a young person's life, and I guarantee it will improve. You know, and it bothers my heart just to think about these situations that's going on. It's got a lot to do with unemployment situations and stuff like that, and not having any parents at home or anybody to talk to these kids about doing the right thing. So, you know, I just hope that we all can get involved in somebody's lives, so that Saginaw could be a better place for everybody to live and strive and to raise their children, and hopefully get good, gainfully employed jobs and make this a better city for all of us. Thank you. Let me comment. Thank you.
And I can't agree with you more. The more we get involved, we're trying to end this vicious circle, and it really does begin with the young people and trying to prevent them from following in some of the negative activity that's going on. We certainly want to do that. So thank you for everyone who's come out and to our meeting tonight, our staff. Thank you for all your time, our media, and we just thank you for your interest in being here with us, with us tonight. With that, I'm glad you brought up the idea of the Boy Scouts, both Jonathan and Michael. Thank you very much for being here tonight. We certainly enjoy your presence. And please pass on to your other members of your troop that we certainly welcome all our scouting, young scouts, to come to a council meeting. Some of them will be doing it for part of their badge requirements and stuff, but we certainly like them. And of course, you will certainly put them on notice that we will do, take advantage, and we'll have them do the pledge for us. That's wonderful. But since we're talking about the scouts, I have to be a little boastful here. My grandson Joshua has just started his Eagle Scout program, and so within a year or so, I'm going to be very proud of a new Eagle Scout, and I'm very proud of that. And Councilman Klorus, for a long time, our church was also vacant, not having a Cub Scout pack, and we do now have another one that has just started up. So as some fall off, others do, I know, come up, and so, but it takes volunteers, and we talked about that back here, it takes volunteers, and we have a wonderful community of volunteers in our city, tremendous. And Councilman Balls, obviously, each one of these council members here volunteer somewhere or another in some organization or some group all the time, and our citizens do it, whether it's Friends of Hoyt Park, whether it's the Celebration Square Children's Zoo has volunteers down there throughout the whole city, tremendous. And then that isn't even begin to talk about our neighborhood associations and all the work that they do, and our faith-based community and all the work they do with our community. So at this time of season, I think we have to look at our blessings, and one of those blessings in the city of Saginaw is our tremendous amount of volunteers and people who are concerned, and that will make this city even a better place than it is already. So we just wanted to pass that on. With that, Madam Clerk, I think we should move right on to our city managers' reports.
Okay, good evening. Good evening. We have a few presentations this evening, so I just had a couple items to update you on. First, I wanted to let council know that tomorrow evening at the Delta College Board, the consultants for the Saginaw City Center project are updating their board on the status and the progress. They are still waiting to hear from the state of Michigan, I believe, but they're not resting and waiting. In fact, Mr. Carwatt, Mr. Klopsick, I, and Mr. Miller here met with them last week and gave them information. They're very interested in working with the city on a number of projects, and this Saginaw Center is very important to them, so. And I would also mention that they did give to me individually, and they said at the meeting as well, that, and want to let council know, that they gave a big thumbs up to our GIS department and Mr. Klopsick, that, and I would say that our GIS department is one of the best ones in the state. We provide that service countywide, and they pay for themselves. So I think that's great to have a consulting firm recognize that as well. He's been, Jeff has been helping with them on doing mapping, and they're actually making a 3D model of the downtown, so when they're finished with that, they'll give that back to the city and share it with us, and I'm sure Jeff will make great use with that for our systems as well. So I wanted to relay that to the council. And I also wanted to update you all on the Cathay Street Pedestrian Bridge. Mr. Carwatt and Beth London, our city engineer, has been working on that. I believe it was signed to Ms. London, and she reports today that the repairs to the pedestrian bridge were completed, and the bridge is now open. Lake State Railroad has placed a work order to mend the fence, which is the fence that's been cut several times, and their work should be done tomorrow or Wednesday. Personnel at Arthur Eddy School have been notified that the bridge will be open tomorrow morning, and we have requested that school staff or volunteers be stationed at the bridge and the fence to help make sure that the fence is not cut again and the bridge is utilized. That was one of our concerns that Mr. Carwatt voiced to the schools as well. If we're going to spend the money on the bridge, the schools need to be dedicated to make sure the students are using it to safely cross, so we hope that they do that. Unfortunately, Ms. London was not able to talk to Mr. Gordon, who's the principal at the school today, but she had requested that he contact engineering so that she could talk to him about that. Also, Lake State Railroad has asked that the city police patrol that area to make sure there isn't further vandalism to their fence. I believe they have repaired the fence several times, and it gets cut repeatedly. So that's one of the reasons why Mr. Carwatt had asked the schools to make sure they can station someone there, because if the fence is cut, the students aren't going to use the bridge, as he mentioned when he was presenting. It's somewhat of an intimidating structure, so hopefully, the school can help with that and help provide the students with a safe way to cross the railroad. So that was fairly quickly done by engineering, so good job by Engineering Department and Phil on getting that taken care of as well. And those are the only items I have to report on tonight. So our first presentation, we were contacted by United Way and asked to have a, if 211 could provide an update to city council. So we have Tom Bagan, who is, we all know from Consumers Energy. He is also the board president, and Ms. Sarah Kyle is the executive director of 211. Tom?
I've had the pleasure to talk with you a lot in the past about a lot of good things that are happening here with my company in this city, investments we're making in this city, the natural gas and electric distribution to increase reliability, contributions we're making in the city, too, Friends of Hoyt, Friends of Hoyt Park and other agencies in here for quality of life issues, volunteerism that a lot of our employees have done in the city, and other energy efficiency programs, things that we offer our customers to try to reduce our customers' energy bill. I'm going to switch hats on you tonight and wear that hat as the chairman of the board for Northeast Michigan 211, but I'm going to continue with talking about good news because this is a good news story. So I'm going to talk a little bit and kind of introduce 211, and especially for all of us, thank United Way for what they do to make sure that we have the 211 service here in Saginaw County. So first of all, what is 211? 211, if you need help, you can do nothing better than to call 211. 211 is an agency that puts people with, that need help, in touch with the agencies that can help them. It is a premier referral call center, and it's premier because it houses a database of all agencies here in Saginaw County that can provide services to people that need help. The database is current, it's live, it's refreshed frequently. So I deal with a lot with people who struggle paying their utility bills. A lot of times, depending on what's the situation, some agencies can help them, some agencies can't help them. It's a real frustration for people who are, who really need some help. It's really hard in the first place to call for help, because most of these people aren't used to doing that. They want to figure out how to do that themselves, but sometimes you've got to call for help. So when they do that, it's very, very hard, and when they do call for help and they get the wrong number, and the wrong number, and the wrong number, it makes a very difficult situation even harder for these people. They only need to dial one number, 211. 211 makes sure to put them in touch with the agency that can help them for their specific situation 24/7, 365 days a year. So not only is 211 a premier referral service, it is a very powerful data tool. Sarah's going to show you a little bit tonight, some of the data that we collect with 211, and I must confess, first of all, I'm a data junkie, but I truly believe that data is power. Data helps you make good decisions. When we look at data and we look at the needs that we have, when those needs occur, we can, we can look at this information a lot of different ways. One of the things that we know now, and it's not a big surprise to a lot of us, but the number one need here in Saginaw County for people that call 211 for help is utility help, natural gas and electric service in here. So 211 mobilizes and makes sure that they've got a ready recruitment and a ready list of agencies that can help these people whenever they call. So it's a premier referral service. It is a premium also tool for collecting data that we can use to make decisions and help us decide where we need to deploy resources and what those resources need to be to help the people in Saginaw City, Saginaw County that might need that help. 211 is not paid for by government agencies and not paid for by taxes. It's paid for by the counties that use the service. Of the counties in the 211 district, all but two counties now are members of Northeast Michigan 211, and in Saginaw County, we need to say a particular thanks to United Way of Saginaw County, Sherri Benchley, because they pay the full freight of the cost to have the 211 service available here in Saginaw County. So anyone in Saginaw County, if they need help, they dial 211, courtesy of United Way of Saginaw County, who pays the bill so that we can have that service available here in Saginaw County. So we want to do two things tonight. Number one is Sarah and I want to make sure that you and everybody that hears this and everybody that people talk to here is aware that if they need help, dial 211. If you have an emergency, you dial 911. Before you dig, as a utility guy, you call Ms. Dig 811. If you need help, call 211, and Sarah and her team have people that will take care of you, will respond to these calls 24/7 and put people in touch with agencies that can help them. With that as an introduction, I'm going to tip this over to Sarah Kyle, who's the executive director of Northeast Michigan 211, and she's going to share some information with you.
Again, thank you so much for having us. I'm going to go through a PowerPoint, although you know how Tom can be, so he went through half of my stuff, but we'll still go through it like this is the first time you've ever heard. How it used to work, when people were in need, they would hopefully remember that they read an article, that they heard that there was help at your local action agency. It could be quite a bit of a mess. Now, when people need help, they dial one number, and we can find the help, we can find the service in their community that is available. We know services change. Agencies get grants, they lose grants. They may have time limits, you know, they only offer this money during these months, and we keep that up to date so that people don't get a phone call, they don't call up the agency and say, you know, I'm looking for utility assistance, and they hear, I'm sorry, you called the wrong number. That increases hopelessness, and we know in a community, that's not good for anyone. So we know people can dial one number, and that's for childcare, housing, all kinds of issues that deal with health and human services. Our database contains almost 1,000 agencies, and we are actually connected with the state database. We are now all on the same system, so we can search counties from all over the state. Someone might call and say, well, I'd like to know if there's a resource for my mom up in the U.P. We can search that as well. So this is currently who we serve at Northeast Michigan. We're 20 counties right now. I'm in the process of finalizing the application for the last two counties, Ogma and Iosco. Our service is continually going up. As you can see, we're moving forward. This year, we're on track to over 37,000 calls. I actually put I actually put some data in the packet that you have that is not on the PowerPoint. You can see exactly what people are calling for from your communities. What I was given was a couple of your ZIP codes. We can do this on county, we can do it on ZIP code. We can look up and find out exactly what people are calling for. You'll see the top reasons people are calling for ZIP code 48601. This is from the 1st of the year through November 30th. This is in the packet that I gave you. So these reflect exactly what's in here. You see about 60% are for utilities. We have about 12% for housing. We know people are calling for basic human needs. People need these things to get by. There's also lists of reasons why someone might call. Maybe it'd be one call for automotive repair. But you can see what the calls are based on your ZIP code. We can actually pull this out day to day. If you would like, I can pull it out in the hour. What did someone call for this hour? The database that we have is phenomenal. You'll also see on the second page, we have unmet needs. That's one thing that we keep track of as well. If someone calls and says, I'd like help with utility assistance this summer, agencies were depleted. There was no more money. So unfortunately, we had quite a few unmet needs, but we track that. We make sure that, you know, both Consumers, DHS, and all the agencies know exactly what's happening so that when there is money available, when people are getting ready to write grants, when we're doing community planning, they know what the needs are in their community and they know what needs are being unmet, are not being met. Our funding is phenomenally interesting. We are funding from all of our counties, pay a certain amount to again have the service. Your county has been extremely generous in that they don't do fundraising beyond United Way. Your United Way actually gives us more than they, than they absolutely have to because they know that when they invest in 211, they invest in the entire community. We're funded by 15 separate United Ways, but we're also funded by local corporations. We're funded by people who understand, when I give to 211, I'm giving to every single person in my community. We tell our people all the time, almost every message that I talk to my staff about is we serve 908,000 people. Any person can call for any reason. They can call, they can open chat, they can email us. We're going to make sure that we find services for them. So what you can do is obviously give to your United Way. Your United Way supports 211. That's locally, in the state level, and even nationally, they support 211. Advocate, please tell people about 211. We want to help. You're in the helping field. I heard all of your beautiful, you know, sharing about Big Brothers, Big Sisters. You come across people who are in need. You can do that research yourself or you can be very kind and say, call 211. There's someone on the other line, on the other end of that line who is trained to take your call. Display 211 items. I gave you all a poster. It's very selfish. The people in the community need to know where to go for help. We can get you more information. We can get you smaller tear-off pads. Just a reminder to tell people to call 211. Ask for a presentation. When you're going out, feel free to give me a call. Let's see more, how many more calls we can get from Saginaw County. We know there are more people in need. We know that we can address that. And then finally, if you know of a community, when you, when you have your meeting at Big Brothers, Big Sisters, make sure they're updating their information. It is owned by the community. When the community changes, we need to change our database. We make about 30,000 changes every year to our database, but I think next year, we need to make 40,000 changes. It's got to constantly be changing. And again, that relies on the community updating us as well as us going to them and asking the need to come to us. Finally, a very special thanks to our largest contributors. That's the United Way, Consumers, Dow Chemical is a huge contributor, First Merit Bank, Mid Michigan, and Listening Ear. So do you have any questions? I gave you quite a bit of data because I think, while I'm presenting after Tom and as he said, he's a data junkie. But this is the kind of stuff where you can throw me an email. And again, I can look at one month, I can look at one week to see what people are calling about, see what needs went unmet. I can even break it down to what agencies we were referring people to. I didn't go into that detail because I could have printed off quite a bit just for the few ZIP codes that we had. Yes?
Okay. I imagine this happens. You get a call at 211, somebody's just, they're frightened, they're nervous, whatever, and they meant to dial 911, they just didn't know. What do you do? You have a button, you just?
That's the first part of the training. We never leave anyone, we don't put them on the phone until they can transfer to 911. We also transfer crisis calls to usually Listening Ear, but to a crisis call center. And then on the reverse side, I believe your Saginaw County has one as well. 911 very often has a button to transfer people to 211 because many people call, when I don't have, you know, food at the house, I may feel like that's an emergency, but that's not for 911. So it goes both ways. We actually can't even go into a county until we have understanding that we're going to send calls to you if we get them. Now, that doesn't happen often, but yes, we're set up to immediately transfer over to 911.
Good. Good. Thank you.
I'm going to go with Councilman Klop. Go ahead.
This is something actually I've been aware of for several years. I've had one of these posters in my office for quite a while. And it seems like something like this should be in every business's office, certainly every attorney's office, every doctor's office, every school. Is that something that you are actively promoting to try and go to these places?
Absolutely actively promoting it. Because we believe the more people who call, the more help that we can give. That's what our goal is. That's our agenda, is to get people help. So yes, we are. In fact, Saginaw is one of the, you know, biggest areas and it can kind of be overwhelming when we serve 20 counties. But we spent quite a bit of time here in Saginaw, working with your United Way to make sure people hear about us. There was a statewide survey about one in five people have heard about 211. That's not enough. And in Saginaw, just from some, you know, stories that we've heard, not enough people know. So yes, we've actively been going to the hospitals, to the doctors, to your local service fairs. I have more posters in the back, if you're willing to take them, I am, we do have a small staff, that's the only, but I'm willing to come out, present when you need me. And please feel free to speak on our behalf. It's an easy message. Dial 211.
Have you approached, for example, every courthouse and asked if they would have a place to put these?
I have not, but I would be more than willing to.
I think that would be, I mean, they're the ones that see people daily. And a lot of these people have problems that can't be addressed directly by the courts. Those kinds of, City Hall, obviously, having them here available is another place. Things like that. Down, people come all the time downstairs to pay bills and they've got problems, but they don't know who's up and to, what a better place if we could find that kind of a place to put it.
I think I got a contact in the back of the room who we're going to do that with, but absolutely. But it needs to get out there. And we need a reminder.
The final thing, if I apologize to interrupt you. I, you, your name is Sarah, right?
Yes.
I don't see Sarah anyplace listed in any material, so how do I contact?
There are thank you notes in my office that are being mailed out tomorrow morning that have my card in it. I didn't want to overwhelm you with information, but I always tell people, if you want to get ahold of me, dial 211. They'll get you to my office. I mean, it's that simple.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I thank you guys for doing, you know, the work. I too, like, I would ask for some. These flyers, I make sure these get into all the wanna gas credit union since I'm on the board of directors of that credit union. I make sure to get there because people there do need help. I was thinking, you guys do a lot of stuff and it's beautiful, but do you do anything to help people to take care of these issues themselves, like help get jobs? I mean, you give away a lot of stuff, but it's beautiful that you give them a fish, but I would like the people to learn how to fish so they can get their own fish and take care of these issues themselves. Do you guys do anything about employment?
We do have employment services in our database. We are really about getting people to the services that they need. Although we believe that taking that step of making the call is starting on their own self-sufficiency. It used to be they would sit with a caseworker and that person would go through and make sure that they had all these services. Very often now, people are given the task, you need to find it on your own, which is sometimes dialing 211. So no, we don't specialize in that, but we do encourage people to, you know, go to these services, you know, your Michigan Works offices, your local services are referred to quite often.
All right. Thank you. I want to make sure I get some of these before you guys leave.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yep, and you're next, Commissioner Pearlton. Go ahead.
Thank you. Sarah, great, great information. And United Way does a great job in the Saginaw County area. My question is regarding the top unmet needs in the ZIP code areas. Can you kind of explain that or is this just self-explanatory? 1383 and then?
1,083 calls from 48601, 1300, excuse me, called for electric service payment assistance and there was no service available at that time. And I'm going to tell you, DHS, the Department of Energy Services changed how they do utility assistance in the state of Michigan. They cut it off. It's only during winter months. So March through, I believe, November, they don't offer assistance. And that was new in the state of Michigan this year. So people who were used to getting help, they couldn't find it. So this summer, actually, it was the amount of people not being able to find help because then they couldn't go to the state of Michigan, so they went to the local private agencies or the, you know, churches. They all ended up getting tapped very quickly. So this is something that we have not really seen in the past. This is kind of a new phenomenon, really in the state of Michigan 211. This is something we've been addressing with the state of Michigan as well because that's a really high number. And in fact, Saginaw had the highest per capa unmet need for utility assistance in the state for the three months this summer that we really watched it.
So to that point, what are, what are we doing to, to address the unmet needs or?
Well, Consumers opened their CARE program and I can't remember what the C-A-R-E stands for. But as you see, for one, consumers make sure that, they're the largest state contributor to 211 all over Michigan. They also opened up their CARE program in October, making sure that people can get registered to make sure that they can keep their bills from being shut off, excuse me. So, and then we are also approaching the state about their policy to not take any applications this summer because we saw this year, that meant a lot of people going without. So we, we've made a partnership with both the state and consumers and the other, you know, different utilities in the state to make sure that, we don't want to see this again next year because this summer, the calls were over and over and over. I'm sorry, there's no one. I mean, that was for the entire state. Saginaw, you know, was, was the worst in the state per capa.
It's an excellent question, Councilman O'Neill. I mean, having data in front of you and saying, wow, that's a really big number, doesn't do anything for us. And actually, that was one of the drivers for a new program that we had, which is called CARE. And CARE is more than just the help that a lot of the agencies do. What we do is we try to get people out of the predicament they've got them in paying their bills, but then we do up to stealing from Habitat for Humanity. We give them a hand up. We coach them, we work with them, we work about energy usage, we plug, plug them into programs like the Helping Neighbors Program, which gets them a lot of free services to reduce their electric usage in here. So the beauty of this is the data just doesn't sit there and pile up. We look at this data and we actually make changes. And we're not the only ones that do this. Other agencies make changes based on what they see. So this, this really stark need in Saginaw County here has driven us to come up with. We have never had anything like CARE where we basically eliminate some of the bills that people owe Consumers Energy, help them with energy efficiency, and coach them on energy usage. It was driven by the data that we collected with 211.
So that's, that's great. Actually, at least that's an education component.
Exactly.
To educate and provide information to help them reduce their energy costs, consumption, et cetera, then freeing up more monies for the family. So that's good. And I know also Consumers Energy supports the Community Agency Walk for Warmth.
Correct.
I'm not sure how much of those funds are utilized. If, you know, they call 211, you're out of money, then you have an agency like a Community Action Center, which you guys support tremendously to, to, you know, we walk and you raise money, et cetera. Are those dollars also tapped if you can't make the contact at 211 or how does that, how does that work?
Community Action Centers are one of your referral agencies. So if, if you meet the conditions that the Community Action Center can help you, every dollar that we collect when we walk for warmth goes to the Community Action Center. And when a person gets referred to them by 211, those dollars go directly to somebody that needs that service. So exactly, it all fits together.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, Sarah and Ms. Beegan.
I know 211 has been existed for quite some time. I know many of us might think it's new. I remember, I'm a member of Rotary International Saginaw and a 211 representative went there and came to our meeting and shared with us 211 services. A great service. I'm glad that word's get out. And just like Councilman Klop, I took some posters and posted in the courthouse. And often, I get inquiries about it. So I just want to say thank you for that service and getting the word out.
Well, Sarah, thank you very much. I, a couple of comments that I would like to make. This is not the first time we have talked. Sarah called me some time ago with this, very flustered and with the, with the numbers and the high needs. Couple of things. This is a 24 hours a day, seven days a week?
Yep.
Call center is located? Where is the call center located?
We're located inside of a building, inside of a Dow building in Midland. So we have all of our space and technology as an in-kind donation. So wherever they will have us for free, that's exactly where we'll be.
That's very good. Appreciate that. Sarah, of the 20 counties, Saginaw is the largest.
Yep.
And, and I know a few seconds ago, and please don't take offense to this, but a few seconds ago, you mentioned Saginaw is the worst.
No, they are not the worst. They have a lot of need.
Okay. Saginaw is one that has the most needs.
Right now, they are, their highest call volume and I would say when it comes to utilities?
Obviously, with 51,000 people.
Yes.
The highest poverty rate in all of the counties, the 20 counties, that's going to be the case. That's going to be the case. And so I don't want people to think that we're the worst. We are a community of great need.
And that's why we need to get the word out.
And we need to fill that great need for that. So I appreciate that. We appreciate everything that 211 does for us. I will say though, that council members, every time we've had any kind of community gathering or anything else like that, the United Way is there. The United Way has been and continues to hand this information out every time they're at a location. So even in Sarah's absence, United Way has all this information and they're getting that out to the other agencies and sharing those in their presentations. In fact, the United Way presentation to us, they did indicate that they're part of that 211. So I mean, that's another great connection because I know Saginaw United Way does a tremendous job for that. So if there's no other questions, we just want to thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Tom, as always, thank you. You always bring us great positive things that are happening in our community. So we certainly want to thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom and Sarah. Next presentation is from Mike Quinell, who is the General Manager for the Saginaw Midland Municipal Water Supply Corporation. We had a tour that Mike gave for our council members a few months ago and there were, I think, three council members could make it. So given some questions that Councilman Fitzpatrick had asked, we thought it'd be a good idea to have Mike come and present. He's going to give a general overview of the corporation. And if, please let him get through the presentation and then he can answer questions at the end. I fear the Water Supply Corporation is 51% owned by the city of Saginaw and 51 point something and 48 point something owned by Midland. And there are three members from each city on the board. I'm on the board and Kim Mason is also on the board for the city of Saginaw. Our third member is Tom Darnell, who I believe has been on the board for several years. So Tom is currently the Vice Chair of the board and I think will be for the next year. So Mike, Mike does a great job and I think the tour was great. So this should be, give a lot of information for those of you who weren't able to make it. Mike?
Thank you. Good evening. When we get started, I'm Mike Quinell, again, the General Manager of the Saginaw Midland Municipal Water Supply Corporation. And I'm going to use Saginaw Midland or Corporation versus saying that long name throughout the Saginaw Midland or corporation versus saying that long name throughout the presentation. So with that, tonight I've been asked to give a history of the system, the system as it stands today, and then talk about our new customer that we're going to have, that customer being Bay County. So with that, I'm going to get started. The purpose of the system is to provide the city of Saginaw and the city of Midland with high-quality raw water for their treatment plants. And what raw water is, we'll use that term, raw water is unfiltered water. And what we do is we disinfect it with chlorine before it's set on or pumped onto the city. So you'll hear the term raw water throughout the presentation. As early as 1918, the cities were concerned with their water supply. Citizens in both Saginaw and Midland were complaining about the poor taste, odor, and overall quality of their water. When talking about the Saginaw City water, a historian summed it up like this, that the water provided to city residents is scarcely fit for washing and bathing, though for no other purpose. Water sources, what the city of Saginaw had, they had the Saginaw River as their only municipal water supply. For drinking water, deep wells were drilled throughout the city on street corners, and each well had a different taste and water quality. There were 186 hand pumps installed and maintained by the city, and residents carried water home in jugs or pails from their favorite well. And the city at that time was actually called or known as the City of Pumps. City of Midland had a little different situation. Their water sources were located, or the city's located over vast water, saltwater deposits, which is a great place to build a chemical company because of the brine in the water, but not a good place for to get good drinking water. So they relied on the water in the Titibowasi River and the Chippewa River, as well as shallow wells. Neither river was a good supply of water. The Titibowasi River had high salt content. The Chippewa River was, had sugar beet industries located upstream. So neither one were a good choice. So action had to be taken or needed to be taken. As late as 1930s and early 1940s, a local water committee made up of city officials and citizens formed to look for a new water source. The committee recommended abandoning the river sources and developing a new lake hereon supply. Several studies were conducted, but the one that was used the most was a report from the 1935 Michigan Stream Commission. And they studied the water quality in currents in the Saginaw Bay. What they found was there was a high concentration of pollutants south of Point Lookout, and the water quality greatly improved at a location called Point Lookout. So they recommended relocating or locating the raw water intakes at a place called Whitestone Point. You can see that on this map, Whitestone Point's in the blue circle there on the left, and then Point Lookout is just south of it. What they found out at Whitestone Point, the raw water quality had characteristics that were typical of a deep lake hereon water that is relatively free of influences from Saginaw Inner Bay. So that was a location, again, and there's a deep, the water gets deeper out in that location, and again, that's why they recommended locating in this location. Well, just when things got moving, a little event occurred called World War II. So everything was put on the back burner. They got to this point about 1939, then the war started. But right after the war was over, there was a renewed effort to start working on the system again. And in 1946, the cities formally joined together to provide cities, provide both cities with a new source of raw water for the water treatment plants. And thus, the Saginaw Midland Municipal Water Supply Corporation was formed. The state of Michigan actually had to pass special legislation so this two-community effort could proceed, and it was touted back then as a partnership for the common good. Initial steps taken. First, they had to determine the capacity. And you're going to see this term used throughout this. Presentation is MGD stands for million gallons per day. Saginaw needed 23 million gallons per day. Midland needed 20 million gallons per day, so they built a system, of course, to provide that, which would be 43 million gallons per day. They hired an engineering firm out of Chicago called AB&amp;H that had experience in large diameter piping, and also had experience on intakes in the Great Lakes. The cost to build a system back then was $10.3 million, which would be equivalent to about $270 million today. Ownership, and Tim hit on this already a little bit, ownership is based on the usage that each city needed at the time. Saginaw needed 23 million gallons per day out of the 43, so they own 53% of the corporation. Midland owns 20 forty-thirds, or about 47% of the corporation. And again, as Tim mentioned, the corporation's run by a board, three members from Saginaw and three members from the city of Midland. So construction began in 1946, and you can see the equipment that they used back then isn't quite what we'd use today. That's on the shores of Whitestone Point. This is actually single axle dump trucks, cable excavators, not like the excavators, hydraulic excavators you see today. And you can see where the intake is being dug there. It's not nice sand to dig through. It's actually limestone up on Whitestone Point. The original system design consisted of one lake hereon intake located two miles offshore at about 53 feet of water, and uses a 66-inch steel pipe. You can see the top of the funnel there. That's the intake where the water comes in, and then travers, goes horizontally through the intake up to shore, again, two miles away. The intake is protected by a 60-foot wide by 12-foot tall wooden crib built on the shores of the Saginaw River in Bay City. It was floated out and sunk over the intake and is held in place by stone, I don't know if it's stone on those outside of the crib. Those chambers were filled with stone to hold it in place. It also acts as a core screen for debris and such that can't, won't go into our intake and possibly plug it up. System also consisted of two pumping facilities. Of course, one at once, Whitestone Point, which is about seven miles north of O'Grady. There's a picture of the Whitestone Station pump floor, the original pumps. And then a place we call Junction Station in Bay City. And that's actually where the pipeline splits. One goes to Saginaw, one goes to the city of Midland. 50 miles of 48-inch pre-stress concrete pipe that reaches from Whitestone Point all the way down to that location called Junction Plant in Bay City. Then 15 miles of 36-inch pipe from Bay City to Saginaw, and then 15 miles of 36-inch pipe from Bay City to Midland. And you can imagine, each one of those pieces of pipe are 16 feet long. And all in all, you're going about 90 miles worth of piping, 50 miles to Bay City, and then 30 miles onto each city. So it's a lot of pieces of pipe and a lot of joints that need to go together correctly. And they all did it in about two years. All this was constructed. So 1948, water began to flow, and the city celebrated. Saginaw actually celebrated a little more than Midland. They touted it as the world's best water, and you can see the gentleman standing there. And they actually buried, had a formal ceremony to bury one of their pumps. It's actually a hand pump that's placed in a casket, taken from a street corner in a horse-drawn hearse to the front of the water treatment plant. And you can see a pretty good turnout for burying a hand pump. And they were pretty happy. Actually, their water source must have been pretty bad at the time, and I guess they were pretty happy with their new supply. So they did celebrate. Well, a good thing happened in 1948. After that, water sales increased rapidly due to economics that were occurring and growth in the area, and the system needed to expand to meet demand. The Penconning Booster Station was added in 1955. Larger pumps were added up at Whitestone. Those are 2,500 horsepower vertical turbine pumps. But the big thing that occurred was starting the addition or adding a second parallel pipeline, parallel to the first one. Construction began in 1968 and was done in stages. And construction started up north at Whitestone Point and worked its way south. And that was a 72-inch pipeline that was installed. The first section to be installed was 12 miles long. Then they also, in 1968, added 48-inch parallel pipelines to both cities. Actually, this paralleling didn't conclude until 2008 with the Junction Station Piping Improvement Project. And that's a 60-inch steel pipe that you see being held up there and put in place. And that actually helps parallel the piping at the yard, or the yard piping, we call it, at Junction Station. That was the last place that there was a single route for water to pass through. And we wanted to make sure that wasn't the case. We had a break there. We didn't want to do all this paralleling and have that be the one lone place. And now that has been fixed, and all the paralleling is complete. Other advantages of paralleling or adding a second pipeline include increasing system capacity, decreasing pipeline pressures, and that in turn decreases electrical consumption. Our biggest expense is electricity. We spend about $900,000 per year right now for electricity. If we didn't have that second pipeline, we've calculated that it'd be close to $3 million. So it was a big savings by adding that second pipeline. Some other advantages, and this is a big one, it adds redundancy if one of the pipelines were to fail. And there's also crossovers between both those pipelines about every six or seven miles. So if we have a break, what we can do is isolate it with valves, repair that, and at the same time, water's flowing around that section through the remaining pipeline that's in service. So that's a big feature that we have and some redundancy that's helped us all sleep well at night. The other big construction activity that occurred over the years was a second intake was installed in 1993. It's located about one mile offshore and 35 feet of water, and is a 72-inch steel pipe. You can see how they open cut that, the point there, and then it, of course, is buried underwater and covered with limestone. Covered with the same type of wooden crib, pretty much the same design. This is actually built out of 12-inch by 12-inch Douglas firs. You can see the size of it and scope of it with the trucks in the background there. Again, built in Bay City and floated out into place. And this leads us to our system map. You can see up north in the upper right-hand corner, Whitestone Point, excuse me, parallel pipelines coming down to Junction Station in Bay City, then onto the city of Saginaw, onto the city of Midland. So that leads us to where the system stands today. Includes three pumping stations, pumping facilities, Whitestone Point, which is located seven miles north of O'Grady, Penconning Boost Station, the Junction Station or Junction Office in Bay City, which also houses our, that's where our boardroom is, our offices are, and also our maintenance facility. Parallel pipelines from Whitestone to both cities. And I should comment, there is a section on the way to Saginaw that the 36, the original 36, has been converted back to a finished water pipeline, so it's not parallel the entire distance. So when I say parallel to both cities, there is a portion that's not true. Two lake hereon intakes, and then a fully equipped lab. The current system capacities, the intake capacity is 230 million gallons per day. We have a maximum capacity to deliver to the cities of 120 million gallons per day. And the estimated cost to complete this entire system, which pretty much, we have, everything is redundant, so we have a backup and everything, will be about, if we had to build it today, it would be about $580 million. So it would be an expensive undertaking if you had to start from scratch. And I think the Carrigandi Water Supply going down to Genesee County would verify these numbers. The system serves 260,000 people in six counties, ranging from, of course, Saginaw, Midland, all the way up to Iosco County. And we currently have six wholesale customers. Up north, we have Sims Whitney, city of O'Grady, city of Omar, Standish, Limwood. And two years ago, we added the Saginaw-Chippewa tribe at their casino location just south of Standish. And what I want to talk about today, we were adding, are going to have a new customer starting next summer, Bay County and their new water treatment plant. They're going to be a new customer. And with that, I just want to talk a little bit about, I know the three council members that were there saw some of the projects firsthand, so I want to go through that. But how this all started was with formation of the Bay Area Water Authority. It started, formerly came together January of 2013 and had been worked on for years. And what that entailed was representatives from 15 different Bay County municipalities agreed to partner and construct a new state-of-the-art membrane water treatment facility that would receive raw water from the Saginaw-Midland system. Soon after, the next month, February 2013, Saginaw-Midland's board signed a raw water agreement, a 40-year agreement, to supply up to 22 million gallons per day to this new Bay County water treatment plant. The Bay Area Water, the reason we're able to do this, though, supply Bay Area, is because we have, currently have excess capacity. Flows are down over 25% in the last 12 years. A lot of that is due to some foundries that closed, efficiency gains. Dow is using less water. People are being more green and not using as much. Plus, it's, you know, all the appliances in the house use less water. So that's all adding up. And that's pretty much constant across the state. Almost all municipalities are seeing that 25% drop. Well, Saginaw-Midland's current capacity is 120 million gallons per day. Our peak day over the last five years has been about 75 million gallons per day. So that leaves us with a current excess capacity of 45 million gallons per day. And just to point out, Bay County currently uses about 8 million gallons per day on average, with a peak of about 14. Some of the projects, or some comments here, why would we want to provide Bay County or have Bay County as a wholesale customer? Well, the biggest reason, economics. We're able to spread the fixed cost over a larger volume, and then to fully utilize the assets that have already been built and constructed and paid for, and get a return on its investment. The Bay County plant is expected to be operational by next July, and Bay County is paying for all the capital improvements that we need to make in order to supply them water. Some of those projects, and I'm going to go through three of them, there are three main ones. The Connection Piping and Vault Project, which entails connecting the two new 30-inch pipelines that are going to go to their new plant to Saginaw-Midland's existing 60-inch pipeline, installation of 750 feet of parallel 30-inch duct lining pipeline from that connection location to a new vault that we own. And then, of course, construction of that underground vault, which contains flow meters, control valves, which are going to be controlled by our Whitestone operation is 24/7, so they're controlling the valves here, and also the valves going to Saginaw-Midland. And it also contains pressure relief valves. And that project is about 90% complete. Just some pictures of that to give you an idea of the piping. Those are the two 30-inch pipelines pointed to the east, going to go to the new water treatment plant. And this is the corporation's existing 60-inch pipeline. Those are the, actually, have they traversed 750 feet, and there's starting construction of that new vault. You can see they're just starting to put some forms up to the floor. And then the vault, as it's now finished before excavation and landscaping has occurred, but that is the finished vault. Couldn't get any good pictures of the piping inside, but again, there are parallel piping and all the infrastructure that goes inside that vault. Another project we're doing, or have already done, is installation of large diameter piping and several valves in the yard at the Penconning Boost Station. And this is needed to help bring that boost plant online without having to shut down our system's largest pipeline to do so. That was something that was in the forefront 10, 12 years ago, and as flows went down, it became less important. The reason that boost station's going to be important is because Bay County, when we have them as a customer, that boost station is more likely going to be needed. The status of that project is complete. There's a picture of that. That's actually, can't really see it real well here, but that's 36-inch stainless steel pipe. And then there's a large check valve that that construction workers are putting in, and then the rebar you can see for the vault that's going to be poured around that. And then the other, the third project we're working on, and this is in process, is installation of a 2.5-megawatt generator at Whitestone that is capable of operating the corporation's largest pump, which is capable of pumping 60 million gallons of water to the cities. This is needed because the new Bay County plant is not going to have a large lake reservoir like Saginaw and Midland have. Saginaw is out on Conchville Road, and also another reservoir called Lake Linton, right beside the treatment plant. But this is going to be needed. If Whitestone had a power outage and is unable to pump water, this generator will be needed to continue providing Bay County water. The status of that project is a generator, and the supporting equipment have been on, are on order and expected to be delivered in early spring, with installation complete in June of 2015. And with that, let's picture Whitestone Point, where all the water comes from. I'll open it up to any questions.
Councilman Fitzpatrick.
Thank you very much. I apologize for not going on that tour. I'm sure it was very interesting, and it is very interesting. I have a couple of, well, I didn't know that we were staying at your cottage up there. So anyway, some questions came to mind as you were talking here. And so if I could prevail upon you, how many employees are involved in all these different municipalities with the water, dealing just with?
Just our municipalities, 13 employees.
13, okay. Wow, and you do all that with 13 employees?
Yeah. And the plant, you know, Whitestone is run 24/7, like I mentioned. And we have two general maintenance and, or three general maintenance, two electricians.
Mm-hmm.
Because there is a lot of electricity involved in pumping water. It's one thing that's sort of a surprise when you first look at the system.
Yeah. You know, one of the things that, of course, since 9/11, that people have talked about is, you know, the dangers.
Right.
You know, supposedly being able to poison a water system, whatever. I don't know how real that, all that is. But so what do we have to do? What do you have to do as far as security? I mean, we have, I'm assuming, a really top-notch security.
Yeah, we have, I mean, we have fencing, security cameras, and lighting pretty much around the plants. That's the three we, you know, would keep the plants, you know, that's all electric gated. There's, you know, even in the daytime, the gates are closed. So that's the event there. You know, it's been talked about out at the intake location, if somebody were to go out there. But in such, at 53 to 60 feet of water, there would literally need to be almost a freighter out there trying to
Right.
do some bad things. So we keep an eye on that. We did have, there was a study done by the DEQ, and we have a, I can't remember the term they used, low vulnerability because of the depth of our intake. Other intakes, of course, even Bay County's current intake is about 10 or 12 feet of water. So we think just the location it's at, two miles offshore, it would take a large volume of something to pollute the water.
And as far as the Genesee County, and I don't know if you can answer this question, but why is it that they opted to do the source that they, as opposed to going to Saginaw, for instance, and giving their-
Actually, we were approached by them at one time, when they were looking at, currently there's, of course, provided water by Detroit. It would just, they needed fifty million gallons of water, and as you can see, you know, we, we had to think long and hard about giving up twenty-two million gallons, plus it's another fifty miles, so that total trip of the water, it would have been a lot of infrastructure, so. We felt that was gonna be too close to what the, you know, the city, cities want to have on reserve in case growth were to occur again.
Yeah, so it would have been stretching us right?
Right, right, right to the limits. As you see, our excess capacity is forty-five, and they wanted roughly fifty, so.
Right, okay. All right. As far as, you know, sharing whatever kind of income, I guess, is, is, is involved when Bay City, or Bay County comes in, is there any, I mean, this is all, it's all water, so you don't want to think of making money off of it, I, not a whole lot anyway, but, but it just seems to me that, you know, is there, is there some kind of benefit to the City of Midland and Saginaw in having Bay County with us financially?
Yes. That savings is pretty substantial to both cities. It's roughly, it's seven hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars reduction in the city's raw water cost each year, so. It's a big savings for the city, and again, you're using all the infrastructure that's currently in place.
Right, good.
So it's, it's significant.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
Any other council members have questions? There's a whole bunch down here, Councilwoman Brendan Morris.
First of all, thank you for the presentation. But this question is for Ms. Kim. Ms. Kim, I visited your plant when I was running for city council, and I was fascinated. And I've seen all of those pipes and tubings, so is that what I'm seeing up here too? Okay, but it's similar to it? Okay. I was impressed. I didn't go to only two, I, I too, I'm sorry that I didn't make it, but I was fascinated with our plant. When I toured it and went all around the city and seeing how the water filtered in and filtered out, so, thank you so much.
We provide them the water to filter, so then they process it.
I know, cause they was telling me, then when you showed the lab, I said, that's our lab, and then I said, that's not our lab.
Well, we don't do near the testing that they do down here, but we have some basic tests that we do.
Okay, thank you.
Apologize, cause I couldn't make that trip either. The good thing I can say is, from many years ago, I've been to both plants.
Oh, good.
So I know that end of, our end of the facilities. My question is actually just sort of capacity question, because I'm a little confused or not clear anyway. You're talking about your maximum daily capacity is one hundred and twenty million gallons a day, but your presentation showed that, it says, per intake capacity is two hundred and fifty million gallons a day.
Yes.
That's a big difference, so please explain to me what that means.
That's how much water we could bring onshore, if you will, prior to pumping. And eat, and intake by itself individually would provide us enough water. The reason it's two hundred and thirty is, we wanted that redundancy. If one were to go down, we'd still be able to supply the maximum system supply. So that's how much water we can get into the pump station at Whitestone Point.
So, so in essence, then, you've got enough capacity already in the lake.
Right.
But if you wanted to put in a third line, you could do it without having to do any more intake.
Right. And if you remember about nine, ten years ago, when that Great Lakes Compact was being discussed, when lake levels were down, we were glad we already had that in there, cause they were, there was discussion possibly limiting, limiting that, and we already had our footprint in the lake, if you will.
So, if we do, you know, it'd be great to get the growth back, and if we ever do, so all we would have to do is build another pipe, basically, and the, and the pumping stations.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Councilman Clark.
I want to pick up where Councilman Fitzpatrick left off. I realize we can't make money selling water, per se. But however, I see the replacement cost on this is about six hundred some odd million dollars.
Yes.
In our contracts with other communities, are they paying, well, let's call it their fair share of amortization costs?
Yes. That, that six to, that seven to eight hundred thousand dollars that I said it's gonna save each city each year is getting a, a return on the investment that the city have already, cities have already made.
So if ten years from now, we need a new pipeline?
They will share in that cost, yes.
We'll have, we'll have the money to do it?
Pardon me?
Will we, in saying, ten years, will we have the money to replace that system?
Well, we wouldn't have the money in the bank, per se, but we would, they would share in the expense, you know, if we were to put a new pipe in, for example, and we had to sell bonds to do that, they would help in paying off those bonds.
And the other question, I, I, I left your, your tour, like, just odd, but there's one number that escaped my mind, mark your own like this. How long does it take a gallon of water to get from the intake to the water treatment plant?
Uh, this time of year, almost three days.
Three days?
Yep. Of course, in the summertime, when flows are higher, it's a little less, maybe two, two and a half days, so. So it's a, it's a long trip.
Yes. But roughly three days for that gallon of water to get
Yes, yep.
from Lake Yearan intake to here.
Actually, to their treatment plant then.
That's an easy number to remember. These others are a little too complicated. Thank you, and thank you very much for your tour, it was, it was beautiful, thank you.
Councilman Fitzpatrick with rebuttal.
Actually, I was curious, you, you mentioned something about the, you know, the governors getting together like they do every year, and I,
Right.
for a long time there, and I haven't heard much about it lately, and it's maybe it's because so much use is, is down. But there are other states definitely interested in
Right.
the Great Lakes, for, for their own water purposes. I mean, out west, there's been some big, big problems.
Right.
I mean, they gotta still be looking at it.
You would think so, I mean, it's a long ways to pump water, but I'm sure they, they've run the numbers probably.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's, again, what, that thought was what, that Great Lakes Compact was, that was the urgency behind that, to get that formed back when they were, when they were looking at it.
Can you run us by that, real quick?
Boy, that's a
Well, I mean, the compact, though, is, is all the governors, right?
Yes.
And Canada.
And Canada, yes. They have to, I think at the end of the day, if there's gonna be a withdrawal out of the basin, the Great Lakes basin, that the governors and the Canadian provinces need to approve that.
So if somebody was to come, they would all have to prove, it'd have to be unanimous, too.
I'm not a hundred percent certain on that, but, I don't know. Andre, you remember that, you were involved in that a little bit? Yeah, not sure.
Interesting, thank you very much.
Okay.
Councilman Clark.
Yes, thank you. Just some interesting thoughts. You, you talked about the two-point-five megawatt generator in the event of a power failure that would serve Bay City, because they do not have a large enough, or any reservoir to speak of. Yeah, how long would the Saginaw, does Midland have a reservoir, by the way? Similar one to what Saginaw has?
Yes. They have about one hundred and twenty million gallons.
So how long would those last for each city?
I always get asked that, that's, it's a good question. Midland's had asks, last about four days, I believe Saginaw about six, right? Depending on the time of year, when, how, what usage is.
The reason I ask is, there's been predictions that if we did have a serious power outage, where a whole grid would fail, it could be months, if not longer, before that were repaired. Does that two-point-five megawatt generator have the capacity to provide enough water to all the systems, even though at a reduced amount?
It would be a reduced amount. The pump that, that generator's gonna power is a sixty million gallon a day pump. Bay City's plant, when it's maxed out, is twenty-two million gallons today. Matter of fact, today it's using about eight million gallons per day on average. You can see that extra water, if you will, will be then pumped on to the cities and be able to be used in an event of emergency.
So if it's a sixty million, even if you did twenty million, every, you'd have some.
You build a set, each city, twenty million gallons, or however that was split. So that would extend the days that the reservoirs would carry us over.
All right, is that gas or electric?
It's gonna be a diesel.
It's a diesel?
Diesel generator, yeah.
Well, then, that's good to know. That does, had it, had me wondering.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I, I'm a pipe fitter, I got a thousand questions to ask you.
Need to go on that tour, is what you need to do.
Yeah, but I'm not gonna do it.
Okay, if nothing else, Councilman Fitzpatrick, you're
Councilman Valls, it prompted my memory, okay, what, yes. How long do you expect this system to last us before we need a major?
Yeah, well, I think we look at it like the Mackinac Bridge. We, we, the board's always been supportive of maintaining it. I think most people that went on the tour would realize that, for some of it being built in forty-six, not those yourselves, but others have been up there, it's, it's in great condition. When things need updated, we update them. Uh, the biggest thing that we sort of have in the back of our minds is that original pipeline that went back in, back in nineteen forty-six. Things, you know, that would be the first thing to probably need replacing, and that's, that would be a big expense. But, you know, obviously, the, the second pipeline is newer and built out of a, built a little better, if you will, cause construction has improved over the years, but the forty-eight inch pipeline would probably be the first thing major expenses that would need to be replaced. But you wouldn't replace the whole thing all at once, I could never foresee that.
Right, right. And the stainless steel, I mean?
Right, well, that was just that one section there. Most of our piping is what we call pre-stress pipe, which is, you know, steel cylinder and steel tension wires coated with concrete, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
The first chance there's a pause, you need to go. I'm telling you right now, they're gonna come up with something else. So, we want to thank you very much, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. You can see he, I think he gets a lot of the same questions. He's, he's prepared to answer everything you had to ask, so. He does a good job. He's very thorough, and, and as he stated, the, the corporation is committed to maintenance, and they are always improving the line, doing projects to, to make it safer and, and protect the line. One thing I'd, I'd say about Mike is he's very proactive, and he recognizes areas of the pipeline that are potential to be damaged, and I think, since I've been on there, I, I don't know how many they've reinforced, where sometimes they have pipes that come up and there's potential for damage, and they build, build a kind of a protective wall around them and encase them in concrete, so they're always proactive like that, so. Mike's right, that he, he watches all that, and the board has been very supportive in, in updating that, so. And, and, you know, I would say, I don't think both, either the city members on the board or the, the Midland members would have gone into the project unless it did benefit both cities in some way, the project in Bay County, so. Mike's great at giving us updates on that project every month, too, so. We thank him for coming and giving an update, I think that's a, that was a good, a nice update, not as good as the tour, but maybe those who missed it, another year or two, we can do that again. That concludes the management update for this evening.
Thank you.
Mayor, your next item of business is the consent agenda.
And the agenda has been available on, at City Hall, on the city's website, and on SGTV channel one ninety-one. Need a motion to adopt the consent agenda items, leaving room for exceptions. It's been moved and supported, are there any exceptions? Any exceptions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Next item of business is reports from boards, commissions, and committees, and appointment of board and commission members.
Are there any reports from commissions, boards, or committees? Council members, any reports? Councilman Tibbs.
The committee, in relationship to the crime-free lease event, met last week. It was attended by members of the landlord association, well, as city staff, thanks for appearing, and several members of council. I guess we left there, I, I believe the city manager is gonna present, or forward it to the city attorney to put it in, into City of Saginaw's format, and so we're moving forward, to an extent. And at some point, hopefully, it'll get to the fourth council.
Okay, very good. Any other reports from the boards, committees? And Councilman Clarkus.
Okay, let's start with the Saginaw Planning Commission. November twenty-fifth, heard and approved the site plan review for multi-unit, single-family condominiums on the Saginaw River, roughly in the four-hundred block of North Hamilton. That is bound by Madison and almost Ames, and Hamilton and the Niagara, which has been vacated. That is gonna be a three-phase proposal. The first phase is the construction of the north third of it, which will, I'll try and paint you the picture. There are one-story units lined up on Hamilton, and on the riverside, there are two-story units. The ones on the river have attached garages, the ones on Hamilton have detached garages. The project is split up into thirds, and they asked for approval of the initial third, which is six single-family units on Hamilton, and four two-story units on Niagara, facing the river. I would assume the proposal for that is economics. I'm sure they intend to sell them all, but until they get commitments, they'll do it stage by stage. That project will start in the springtime, and barring any complications, will be finished in twelve months. As far as the city's concerned, we will be receiving twenty-six hundred and fifty dollars just in permits only. There is a aluminum decorator fence that will surround the property, some green space in between some of the buildings, and alongside the driveways going in and out of the premises. And that, generally speaking, is about it. Do you have any questions? I can answer brief questions.
Do they have, do they have access to the river? I mean, would they have, like, boat docks or anything like that?
Not that I know of. There's a railroad track still there. Whether that is in line for abandonment, I'm not sure. But Niagara has been vacated. Okay, the other one happened the other day, and I neglected to present it to you. At the corner, northeast corner of Attwater and Washington, there's what used to be a gas station many years ago, when I came to town, it was a barber shop. Now it's an empty building. There's not graffiti on it, but there's some pretty gaudy murals on it. You know what I mean?
No.
You don't?
I don't mean gaudy, I, there is no, there's no, no gaudy. I, I thought those were very nice murals that somebody volunteered to put on there for.
Well, if I, if I was an artist, I guess I wouldn't think like that, but anyway. I knew I'd wake you up. That is a drive-through coffee shop. A drive-through. And the reason it had to come to the planning commission is because of the fact that they're serving outside and selling outside, and that needs a special, special permission. The building is gonna be remodeled, the exterior will be painted, and it'll be a car hop type of, early in the morning until sometime around noon, drive-up coffee shop. Whether it'll continue later hours on that is unknown.
Any concern with traffic flow?
No, the traffic, there's a limit of three, three cars lined up. They have two lanes, one that'll accommodate three cars, and the other lane, two cars. The entrance will come in off Atwater and exit onto Washington. And the city's engineering department is, is in accord with every one of these proposals.
Any questions? Yes, Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Mr. Clarus, thanks for that, and when is this due, this project for the coffee shop due to start?
It was supposed to start, like, real soon.
There's a dumpster there right now.
Oh, okay. But the operator already runs a coffee shop across the street from what used to be our newspaper.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
That do it? And a short one from the land bank. We should be thankful for this land bank, by the way.
Thank you.
And I'll tell you why. From January of this year until now, they had 37 structures to sell. These are structures, not lots. They sold 25, and the other 12 were demolished. And the reason I say we should be thankful, and I don't want to mention the city because I just prefer not to. We've got a situation where the county and the city are collaborating so well together that we're going to get this money spent. I know we have no trouble spending money, but when we're put on, on a constraint limit, it's sometimes it's tough to spend $11 million. We're doing it, which probably means if there's any money left over, we are setting a track record where we're setting the bar, and other communities are saying, how are they doing it? So if anything, let's franchise our information to them for a profit. So the communities that aren't successful have one thing in common. The city people and the county people aren't talking to each other. It's funny, you know, if everybody pitches in and works, you get things done. Doesn't make a difference who takes the credit for it. But we've done a terrific job here, and we should be thankful for the land bank. And that concludes my, yes, it does conclude it.
Thank you. Council question?
You said the land bank sold 37, or they had 37 properties, 25 were sold and 11 were demolished?
The land bank had 37, they sold 25. These are not lots, these aren't side lots.
I was just curious, was that in the city of Saginaw, or was that somewhere?
Most were, I can tell you exactly how many were not. One in BV, one in Bridgeport, one in Carlton, one in Albee, and another one in BV. But that is, those demolitions, if they were a demolition, are not done with city funds, that I know of.
Thank you.
And there are still side lots available. If you're a homeowner, you're keeping your property up, and there's a lot next door and you want it, $150, it's a fire sale. But you must take care of your property.
Yeah, Councilwoman Moore?
They went up again, because they were $75 for the lot.
No, huh. It's a fire sale, they were $300.
They were $300.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's for the half a lot, that's for the half a lot, okay.
Buy one, get two.
We all want two, we only need the half.
Okay, any other questions?
I hope not.
We only need the half, huh?
Okay. You, oh, yes, I'm sorry, Mayor, Mayor Protown?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I have a question in terms of, who's our representative on the SEDC? Do we have a, do we have a council representative on that? You're on the SEDC? Yeah. Counselor? Okay. Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, sure.
Just, just a question, and I really appreciate the update of the, of the riverfront development, unless it's something we've been, you know, they've been planning, we've been planning for a long time. And just, in my travels and listening to other cities and other municipalities in terms of the things that they do to attract and make it a friendly environment for economic development, particularly those investors who have made some major investments themselves, and then, you know, potentially asking the city for support, and us being friendly to that, to that, to that investor. I've always had this question, and I thought we would get some representatives from that organization to come before us and kind of give us an update, but, you know, the Armory Building, the Armory Building on Water Street, that is a landmark, as we know, right? Would you agree? Yes, exactly, great looks across the room. And that building, I know, just from my own inquiries and just from information in the past, I know that investor's made major personal investments in that building, major personal investments, and I have yet to hear, hear, hear that, that business come forward to ask for support. My question is, you know, I'm using that as an example of, if that business were to come to us as a city to ask for support, how friendly or how amenable are we to, to work with that type of business owner to facilitate and provide support? I have to answer now. But I'm saying that to say this, those are the kind of things other cities are doing, okay? It's great, and it's fantastic that we have the developments that were mentioned, but when we have anchor business partners like the Armory, Great Lakes Crossing, you know, building that's been there and major investments have been made by that person or that, that group themselves, I would hope, if they were to ever come before the city to ask for support, that we would remove all barriers and find out, if there are some barriers, then we would work with that, those type of, those type of business partners to make sure that they get the support that they need. Okay? So I just want to put that on the table. I'm not sure if they've come forward, or if other businesses like them have come forward. But, but, but I'm saying that to make sure that we are business-friendly to those who have been here for a long time, and have major, have made some major investments through their personal accounts to, to make an impact in Saginaw. Okay, so that's, I just wanted to make that comment, Mr. Mayor, thank you for my time.
Thank you. If you certainly would, could, go ahead.
I understand your concerns. First of all, I ask you to have trust in, in boards and commissions that are set forth. There was a proposal within the past two or three weeks, I believe, and that was approved.
Oh, that's good to hear.
The only, the only drawback, the only question drawback was an elevator or some method of getting people handicapped to the second floor. And I think the arrangement was that the owners will be putting some type of a chairlift system in there.
Good to hear, thanks, counsel.
But that was, that was approved within the vote, past couple of weeks, I believe.
Good to hear.
Time kind of gets confused, you know?
Thank you for the response, I wasn't looking for a response, but I just wanted to, since we were, if I may, since we were on boards and commissions, I thought it was an opportune time to just voice my opinion about that.
I'm glad you brought it up, that way you got, you got an answer today.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. And would that, would that be reflective in the minutes of the, of the organization? Those, those would be reflected in, those approvals? Okay, so if council members were to receive copies of those minutes, then that information would be in there? And I think we do, do we get that one?
It, it should be.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Very good. Okay, we're now, any other reports from boards, commissions? Being none, we'll move on to appointments. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, ma'am. We have three of them this evening. Our first one is approval of city manager's reappointment of Gary Glaza to the Downtown Development Authority with a term to expire December 31st, 2019.
Need a motion to approve?
Support.
Been moved and supported, is there any further discussion on the appointment? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
And next is the approval of city manager's reappointment of John Markey to the Downtown Development Authority with a term to expire December 31st, 2018.
Need a motion to approve?
Support.
Been moved and supported, any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And our third one and final is the approval of city manager's reappointment of Todd Gregory to the Downtown Development Authority with a term to expire December 31st, 2018.
Need a motion to approve? Been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, your next item of business are resolutions. Our first one is to adopt the resolution agreeing to the Municipal Employees Retirement System of Michigan High-Bred Plan.
Need a motion to adopt? Been moved and supported, is there any discussion on the motion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Our second resolution is to adopt the resolution approving a small distiller's license for Old Town Distillery at 124 South Michigan Avenue.
Need a motion to adopt? Been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Little explanation as to what constitutes a small distiller's license, what, what kind of things are necessary in order to obtain a license?
But I, I guess I'm not sure where the, where the answer's going to come from. The Councilman Clarus is answering?
Yeah, it was in here.
Is it in the?
Oh, it's on the resolution? Oh.
Because it's in the description?
Under 60,000 gallons a day.
This is simply approving a new address. This, if you recall, the original building that he was going to locate was at Genesee and Durand, and the council approved that, it must have been six months ago, somewhere around that time, so this is a new address for him. He's purchased a new building, and he's been working with an architect as well as, I think, our inspections department to make sure that he complies with, with everything that's needed in that building.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, you are now at motions and miscellaneous business.
Are there any motions or other business to be come before the city council? Anybody at this end of the table? Being none? Councilman Fitzpatrick, go ahead.
Well, these are just two quick questions. I've had questions from some citizens regarding, they think, it's been, it's been talked about anyway here, that in case leaf pickup was not sufficient, whether people could still, because there's still bagging leaves out there, whether they still might be able to do that.
If any individuals missed the last leaf pickup, then they can contact city manager's office or public services and let us know what, we would prefer if there can be some sort of neighborhood organization so that we could do multiple pickups at one time, that would be the preference, so maybe at the neighborhood association meetings this month, if they have a number of them, and could all get them out on one day so that, that our staff can go out and pick them up at once.
This question came from people in the Adams Boulevard area.
I know, I believe they picked that one up already, so they've, and they've done a couple of pickups, but anytime there's anything like that where they miss the date or public services has done assistance with cleanups in neighborhoods, they just have to contact Phil's office or the city manager's office, and we can arrange something. Maybe it might be a week later when they can coordinate it, when they have staff available, but that can always be done.
Would the convenience station also be a location where they could drop stuff off or not? Because if they could drop it off there, and it would set until you had availability to pick it up?
Historically, hasn't been, just because of the nature of it and how it comes in, it's harder for us to manage it and then get it back over to the compo site, but with the type of fall we had, where we had that early snowfall, I think, when people weren't ready there early November to get all their leaves picked up, and then it all melted, so we have been making exceptions as long as, it'd be very difficult for us to drive the entire city and just try to drive every block and pick up isolated bags, but if they do work, like the manager said, through their neighborhood association, we did do a project with Adams Boulevard, I think it was over 100 and some bags, where I worked with the neighborhood president in that group, and they had them all placed out on the Boulevard where we could come through and get them pretty easily. So if the neighborhood groups did have, they did have some people that wanted to get together, collect the leaves, put them in bags, too, not approve containers, because I don't really have the ability to dump them into the same type of trucks as waste management does, so but we will find a way to pick them up and take them out to the compo site, so.
So this, this question came from some elderly people, so I, you know, they might have missed that, communicate, so.
Nope. I myself might, but, you know.
Are you, one more? I, go ahead, I was waiting, I was waiting.
Okay, neighbor.
Okay.
Another question that I have from some citizens is, apparently Charter has changed the channel for the city council meetings, so I would like to know what that is so I can tell people.
I think we did put that out there quite a few times.
It is 191, okay, all right. Well, I missed that, sorry. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Yes, that's got a motion to adjourn. All in favor, signify by aye. Opposed? Meeting's adjourned.